Also studying the piano and flute. Welcome Bianca, we're pleased to have you with us this evening to lead us in the national anthem.
Thank you. (singing) Oh Canada, our home and native land. True peace with love in all the suns command. With glowing hearts we see the rise of true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on God for thee.[91.11][91.11](applause)
On behalf of the members of council this evening, thank you for coming to grace us with your presentation.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Keep up the good work. Members of council, the first order of business is the adoption of the council minutes of January 14th. Moved by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Diodati. Any questions or comments? Councillor Ring?
Just a correction to disclosures of pecuniary interest. Bill is not currently employed at the Parks Commission, but he's still on the payroll for a few more weeks.
Okay, so noted. Any other changes? Having seen none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Merci, thank you. This time I'll ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest with respect to any matters coming before council this evening. Having seen none, we'll proceed on to our deputations. This evening, I'm pleased to welcome Mr. John Braceway, the executive director, who's going to address council regarding programs in the upcoming annual Tim Hortons Bowl for Kids' Sake Campaign for 2008. Good evening, John, and welcome.
Thanks very much for having me. Thank you Mayor Salsi and members of council. I've come to speak here this evening about some of the things that we've been up to at Niagara Falls Big Brothers, Big Sisters. In late spring 2007, our board, staff, and stakeholders completed the work on our strategic plan to help us guide us through to the year 2010. One of the areas of immediate need that was identified as crucial was addressing our need for big brothers. Historically, and this is how true for the past number of years, less than three out of every 10 volunteers that come through our doors mail. That's meant a list of boys waiting for a mentor that has grown throughout the years. And many of these boys have been waiting for up to two years. These boys that come to us, one of the questions that we ask them when they come through our doors and we first get to meet them is, what kinds of things do you want to do with your big brother? And some of the answers we get are things like, go for ice cream, go for a walk, play video games, have pizza. So they're not asking for a lot, and yet we're still struggling getting big brothers through our doors. We believe that the wait of two years is simply too long, and we felt that we needed to address it. One of the things that we did was we partnered with our fellow agencies in St. Catherine's in Fort Erie to launch a bold new campaign called One Year, 100 Men. You may have seen some coverage on this. Our goal with this campaign was to collectively recruit 100 new big brothers over the course of the year. And we launched this in late September 2007, and I'm here to say that it's gone reasonably well. We're over a third of the way, and in fact, in Niagara Falls ourselves, we've got close to 22, 20 new male volunteers. However, we're not done. It's, we have a lot of work to do, but I can say that we've had great response from the community. We've had great response from agencies across the country who want us to share with them how we're going about this innovative recruitment project. We're also very grateful for the support we've received from the community to help us support this program, in particular, the sleep sheep event that took place this past year, thanks to councillor Diodati and the rest of the committee, and of course, the local hotel owners, without whom it wouldn't be possible. We were able to receive a grant to help us continue with this program in early 2008, and I hope that in September I can come to you and say that we're successful in recruiting 100 new big brothers. However, we also need funds to match these kids, to support the matches once we've made them, and to continue with our innovative new programming. In order for us to do that, we hold an annual fundraising campaign called the Tim Hortons Bowl for Kids' Sake. Our goal for 2008 is to raise $70,000 to help us continue to match these children and to ensure that we can support the matches once they've been made. I'm here to ask for your support as council, and to join our honorary Tim Hortons Bowl for Kids' Sake chairman, Mayor Ted Salsi, again, joining us on February the 16th. Details are available at our website at niagarafalsmentors.org, and I hope that we can count on your support. In fact, I actually have a package here for councillor Diodati.
Okay. Thank you very much, John. Are there any questions of Mr. Braceway, councillor Diodati?
Yeah, two-year leadership, what are the times of the event? Because traditionally you put in a team.
We've got times at 3:00, 5:00, 7:00, and 9:00. The 3:00 and the 5:00 time slots, we're sort of gearing around the new Family Day, because it does take place on Family Day weekend, and so we've got support from the Niagara Stock coming out. We're giving away all kinds of fun, family-oriented prizes at those times as well.
Good leadership, then maybe you could send an email to the group to see.
Sure, we'll do that. We'll try to connect you through my office, and we'll do that. We're going to have a team as well, so we, the objective this year is, as you may have heard, is 100 teams, and John, I think we're filling the spots in pretty well.
We're doing all right. We're at about 65 teams right now, so we still have some work to do and the clock's ticking, so we hope to get a lot of new teams in this week coming.
So make a point of having my staff contact the members of council, and we'll see if we can get our team out there today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, John. Next order of business, we do have with us this evening Regional Councillor Norman Paddock, who wants to provide counsel with a brief update of regional budget and some matters regarding Edco. Welcome councillor Paddock, over 10 minutes if you would please.
I think I can save you $25 million if the mayor said he might give me 12. That was my mistake in regard to what I was going to speak about. I had in mind a letter I'd received from City Hall in 2005 to go into further information about Paddock card, so what I decided to do was just give that to Mr. Arasiti tonight and have him get it to the council. My presentation by the clock on this show, 14, 12 minutes, and maybe a couple of questions. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm here to repeat that I believe Netso, and for those that don't know, the Niagara Economic Development Office at the region, funded by taxpayers with over $2 million, is not an accountable or productive use of efforts to revive secure good-paying jobs or tourism promotion in the region of Niagara. First, let me set the facts straight, and I'm going to try to do this in a single, in single sentences, and everything I say is written down here. I ran and advertised when I was running for the seat of regional council in November 06, and I said I would make change and say $25 million or more, and that I would make a difference. About six or seven years prior to me running for the region, I was continually saying that the region had to make change. There was no secret to my intentions. I had here in 2005, Mr. Ruddykop, a distinguished mayor of Fort Erie, said that "It's ugly from a distance, and it's uglier up close." Anybody wishes to read the, in there, but what he says was, "It's ugly from a distance, and it's uglier up close." He wanted to succeed, and is quoted, to quote, "The growing dissension in the rights within the region's chamber." Alderman Valpatti, thanks Fort Erie, has tracked his succession thinking, and she goes on to say, in so many words, and I'm curse crazy, that we just can't sustain the famous. And one more, in the last month, reporter Doug Draper, "We need more McMullins," who is Mayor McMullin of St. Catherine's, "shaking things up." He goes on to say, in what McMullin has quoted a few months ago, "We face some serious challenges in this region, and the status quo is just not acceptable." And this is very important, as McMullin goes on to say, he is almost apologetic for breaking, and I quote, "One of the rules of what he described as the country club at the region." Mr. Draper finishes, "What we need are more municipal representatives like him, who have the courage to sweep the status quo aside and shake things up." Mr. McMullin and I, and the mayor of St. Catherine's, have been called lunatics, as written in the papers for my efforts and his. There is a pattern of dissension. I have started stage for two actions. I took to try and make change in governance by going through the system at the region. Before I made a notice of motion in February the 7th, the council to discuss reduction in numbers of cities, and this leads to my point against Netco in a few minutes, I want to work within the system. I knew I had to have a paper trail to maybe eventually come to this council for the product, who by the way, I've already contacted. I did two things. I had breakfast with a well-respected, long-term regional councillor I'd known for 15 years, and we had breakfast at the pool. The bottom line was, I was told, Norman, I am glad you're at the region, but you can't get anything done. Why I asked? Answer? Because we have three councils at the region. The mayors, the smaller municipalities, and then you have Niagara Falls and St. Catherine's are paying most of the bills for the region. I asked, and I won't put the name here, I have it here, but I asked a senior official at the region to bring up the merger question at the meetings of the regional municipalities' CAOs early in 2007, that would be the 12, whatever is in their call, and discuss the 1998 report called the Bertrand Report, that recommended three cities. January 29, 07, I received a letter from this individual, and it begins, "I could certainly raise these issues at our area CEO meetings. I'm not sure there would be a huge appetite to once again go down the amalgamation path." It ends, and I quote, "The introduction of notices of motion will help the approach in fact round now to approve both counterproductive and divisive. The approach needs to be sensitive to both the current fragile state of Niagara's economy and the burden of Niagara taxpayers. I advised I wasn't concerned about CEO's appetite as much as I was their vested interest." And the Bertrand Report, paid by taxpayers, was ready to go. I was going to, I wasn't going to advocate my authority as councillor at CEO. I introduced my motion to review the city, I presented to regional council, and it was promptly set out for what they call the regional council business plan, meetings at Niagara College and elsewhere during 2007. The consultant, by the way, was paid up to $49,000, and here again, in my view, this is an abdication of white people who are elected. Now back to February 07, at a corporate services meeting, it didn't take long when Netco was making a presentation, not a budget, but for a logo or branding. I was also, I was so appalled, and this was my very first meeting at the region, I told the chair, as he was pounding his gavel, I was going to close Netco down. Thanks to 30-year councillor Bob Saracino, he leaned across the table and sat, and I poked a Niagara Falls review. It's a waste of taxpayers' money. I know Netco goes to the Orient and to many golf tournaments, but what benefits does it have for my municipality? I insert here, January 16 this past, I met Bob at the regional headquarters, and he went in to ask for figures that Port Coburn are paying through the region, and he said that he may at some point ask to have the funds withdrawn. I quote Mayor Miller of Toronto, speaking of travel, "Anything that was not essential in their budget was canceled. We canceled our business development trips." We canceled business development trips in Toronto. I have many friends at the Toronto council, and I wouldn't want to tell you some of the reasons why they canceled. Okay, let me try to bring this all together. The member CEOs did not have appetite to discuss amalgamation. Now look at the report of 9/27/07, and that's the report, Review of Economic Development and Tourism Function in Niagara, inspired by my wanting to close Netco. I reread this morning and just shook my head. This was written for CEOs and mayors. I brought it to this council's attention, and you weren't even aware of what's going on at the moment. This council made a motion that the first round of memorandum of understanding be given to you, this council, before any approval at the region. That was not done, because Netco was not agreed to some strong conditions after three proposals, and I got this from an EDO officer, it was left up to the manager of special initiatives at the region, and still assigned, to write a report and sign by, well, the head guy. Now the appetite wasn't there again, in my view, for change. Talked to the EDO in Fort Erie, January 16, and he told me he doesn't mind, he's kind of ticked off. January 16, I called him about something in the regional Netco budget, and he advised me that Netco should be unincorporated and made more accountable, and above all, EDOs are not happy with the way money is spent. Try the Alberta sand. I mentioned this because look at Fort Erie budget inside of your review, ask Mr. so-and-so and your fellow if they discuss Netco budget at EDO meetings, that they have to sit before that, and the answer is no. Bottom line, change is tough to make. We should go back to the five offices of Niagara Economic Development Corridor, which was doing very well before Netco arrived on the scene, who had industrial parks and brownfields. Netco do not. $7 million is the total cost, and this would be well spent openly with one voice to get Niagara speaking with one voice. Remember, Netco is a private corporation, unelected board, who I figure is doing a service, as they see it, but not arguing with them, not arguing with the procedure, is a private, unelected board, and not responsible to council, and meet four times a year. The irritant from those who will speak up is Netco. Ask Anna Pierce, who received the call that when Netco was supposed to come here and meet with you before the regional budget was done, she was asked that when they come down to put in a good word for her. She told us at a Christmas party. This council made a resolution to withdraw funding from Netco about $600,000 two months ago. I understand you have had no reply. I was assured Netco would be here before the region passed their budget, and this did not happen. I was told after I had been repeatedly ignored, read my questions of Netco. Now listen to this. I was told this by a Netco board member. And this has been going on for a year. The board made a conscious decision to not reply to any of your questions and listen, because they are afraid of you, and bringing any answers to my questions would be used against them. Example of many questions at last week's budget meeting, and this Niagara Falls council, you made history, I applaud you. Netco made their first-ever budget presentation to a regional council, and I was told by members that have been there for 28 years, if it hadn't been for me, they wouldn't have been there. I said, no, 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 if it hadn't have been for the Niagara Falls council, if you did it, then I'd go and ask you to do some more.
Councillor Paddock? You've gone over by a couple of minutes, the clerk advises me, but a couple more minutes, please, and if you could just finish a question, or a next big question.
No, I think I'll go and suspend the chair, go home, and I'll call the committee. But you cut me off on a very important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You sit on this board, don't you, sir?
Yes, I just got appointed.
Okay. I think that would be a compliment.
And we do have, we do have Mr. Perez coming, he's going to be attending, and we have a response that was just given to us, by the way, responded by the, by the region on 24th of January, we have received our package of members of council, so if you have questions, you can certainly.
I have pages to end up here, and you could have, you could have asked for motion of council to let me continue, but you're on the board, and this is what I've been going through for time on.
I have no problem with that. As members of council, would you like to extend the time for councillor Paddock to make his presentation? Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I said, hopefully you'll stay and continue, and I'll take 50, 60, and five minutes more. I just received, as I sat down here tonight, a response approved from Netco with respect to our resolution on the tourism aspect, and it basically says, shows where the duplication is, so we'll go back and deal with the Niagara Falls tourism and come back with a response, but I'd like to hear the rest.
And members of council, just to advise, you know that you did hear last week, the, Mr. Perez as the chair would be coming to a council in the other country until mid-March, but he's coming, I think, the last two weeks of March he's available, and we will have questions, if you have questions for him, he did my answer, got to answer those questions at that time, he wasn't available to come at this point, but we did have a letter here that he wanted to have council receive before he came to the meeting. So councillor Paddock, you have five more minutes, if you would please.
If I can just correct that. I was told through City Hall, not Dean, I was told through City Hall, early January, that Mr. Perez was out of the country. Sunday night, two days after I was told that, he called me from his driveway on his cell phone at 7:00 on a Sunday night, I talked to him for an hour and a half, and I said, I thought you were out of the country. He said, no, I'm not, I'm not.
He's going out of the country now.
No, I talked to him before.
No, he's been to City Hall, and he's going to be, he'll be coming back on a meeting in March.
That's good. I bet you, I bet you would have had that if I hadn't been here. In fact, I'm going to end right there, because your attitude is absolutely lousy, like it is at the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, move on to the next order of business if we can. We have a deputation this evening from the Lions, Niagara Falls Lions Club. Mr. Don Wallace, project chairman, Dave Marinelli, president, and Craig Robinson, past president, are here to present to council an overview of the park redevelopment plans for the Niagara Falls Lions Park. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Salsi, members of council, excuse me. The ingredients of the Niagara Falls Lions, which we have some members present tonight, and they've been introduced, so we won't do that again. The purpose of our visit tonight is to talk about our community park in partnership with the city of Niagara Falls, Parks and Rec, which has been more than helpful to us in all aspects of this park. We do have a two-minute video that we'd like you to watch, and Dean, you want to stop that up? I'll take any questions when I'm done. (pause) Governor. (music) 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 (music)
Mr. Wallace, this is an exciting project, we have some boards as well to display some of the equipment. Maybe Ms. Morrissey, would you like to elaborate on some of the stories that we're talking about?
Ms. Morrissey, the staff have been working for almost, what, two years now in partnership with the Lions for this fantastic project. Background report that we provided to you for information purposes does do here, highlighted many of the, the features of the park, but it represented out in the bar, the square panels in terms of development. Panels were also incorporated into the video that you just saw. One of the key features of the park is obviously a focus on accessibility, and it also fundamentally addresses our strategic plan in terms of identifying green space opportunities in our community where there's, there's need and deficiency. The park plan has been developed in partnership with the Lions, who are also funding the project over the next fifteen years, and Don is going to be presenting a large check in a moment. It's based on addressing those needs and making it a more of a four-season opportunity park. The boards began speaking of the design, we did have an information meeting with members of the community, it was widely promoted, in terms of including advertising in the review, our website, and with Lions in attendance, as well as staff. Cynthia Roberts is here with us tonight, I'm happy to see her with us, and one of our staff, Jack Clayton, wasn't able to be here. But through that, that information meeting, we addressed many of the changes to the park, including the greening, facility improvements, and how we feel that in partnership with the Lions, we're truly going to serve the needs of our community together. So that's somewhat of the project in a nutshell. The background material from Budget 2007, it was included as a capital project at that time to initiate it, so we're moving forward. We have included parts of Phase Two already in 2008, and we're looking forward to, with tonight's acceptance of the information update, we're moving forward with the park development, and hopefully we would see the playground up mid-spring 2008. And we're also looking forward to getting the splash pad as Phase Two ready for late spring, sorry, late fall to start with tendering for this year. Another exciting element of the project that we haven't put in here is that we have been approached by a major charity. The Lions threw their ad, and the one project in the review, found out that accessibility was a key function of this particular charity, and they're looking at our range of, I want to leave it quiet at this moment, but fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, in addition to what we've itemized, may become something that we receive, with consideration in July '08. So we're very, very excited about that, and I also was very happy, thank you, Don. The casino has already donated twelve hundred dollars towards the campaign for a special bench in the park. So that's sort of it in a nutshell. We're looking for the fundraising project to take off, hopefully, now, and I'll turn it back to Don then with a large check.
Okay.
May I call upon our president, Ryan Deeb, and our past president, Ryan Clayton, is that the check you remember?
I'd like to commend the Lions Club, the Niagara Lions Club for this initial contribution. The Lions Club have committed, I believe, fifteen thousand dollars for the next, per year, for the next ten years, is that correct?
Yes.
Or ten, nineteen, I'm sorry. This represents the first installment. I did say, your presence, I'd be glad in any way I can to assist you, and in the fundraising, Lions Club, I think, has eighty-four different areas of concern, is that you contribute to different groups of, of, throughout the entire community and the region, so I want to know it's a good work you do. I know you have a membership that's being challenged by, by deterioration, of course, in terms of numbers dropping off and many sort of stuff, but you're very determined, and I give, I give you a lot of credit. So the spaghetti nights are certainly great and delicious, and we tend to those, and again, if we can figure any of the cause, if you do wish to have it in a special portion, we can help with, we'd add a healthy, so thank you very much for this contribution.
Just, we're very proud to be in partnership with the City of Niagara Falls. We're hoping that this, this project will not only be something that the Lions can be proud of, but the City of Niagara Falls and the whole community can be proud of also.
I should note, this is in addition to everything else you do, and, and this is a special effort, so I can tell you that, that is, we know a lot of people are very excited, we're attending, the neighbors are really pleased to see the, we have a whole park take place, so thank you so much for your efforts, your city.
Yeah, I thank Niagara Falls, and City Council, and Mayor, for giving the Niagara Falls Lions Club the opportunity to live up to our motto, "Please, sir." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we couldn't, we couldn't expect a better team than person, right? They've been unbelievable stuff for them.
Thank you for your commitment. Thank you, David. Members of council, we have two matters to deal with. Reports are 2008-04, let's have a motion to receive information as an update, moved by Counselor Perry, or seconded by Counselor Mayes. Any comments or questions? Have you seen none, others in favor? Motion's carried. And also, the next item is our 2008-06, the Arena Fundraising Task Force Volunteers Update, can I have a motion with counsel, please? Moved by Counselor DeDaddy, seconded by Counselor Perry. Also in the report, there's a request for a council volunteer, one council volunteer who could sit on that committee. Do we have anybody who'd like to offer their services? Counselor DeDaddy?
Worshipful, since we have two counselors away, I know Counselor Peter Angelo was, I should feedback that, Counselor Peter Angelo was originally, I believe, somewhat involved with the, the project. I'd like to at least maybe give him a first opportunity, and if he doesn't, then I would sit and I step forward.
Okay, that's great. We'll extend that opportunity. Okay, thank you. We have motion and a follow-up in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Clark, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw, to permit a two-and-a-half-story, twelve-unit apartment dwelling at the corner of, southwest corner of McCloud Road and Wilson Crescent. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, December 28th, 2007, by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the site, notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Interior Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, at this time, in good honesty, director of planning, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hulich.
Thank you, worship. Yes, this, this first application involves lands at the southwest corner of McCloud Road and Wilson Crescent, that involves two lots formerly occupied by single-family dwellings, they're currently vacant. The property in question involves about a half an acre of land. The lands to the west of this property and to the south are used for single-family dwellings. North across McCloud Road is a four-and-a-half-story apartment building currently under construction, and a second apartment building next to that as well. The, in close proximity are major shopping facilities. McCloud Road is an arterial road. The background behind this particular project is that the applicant is seeking a zoning amendment to facilitate a twelve-unit apartment building, two-and-a-half stories in height, there have requested an R5A zoning with special provisions respecting the lot area for dwelling units, the front yard depth, and the exterior side yard width. The layout posed by the applicant is shown on the site plan, the, in this particular drawing, north is to the left, so McCloud Road is to the left, and the, I'm going to get a bit of feet, I'm going to name it, the, and Wilson Crescent is on the north. The building itself is towards the front of the property, and the, there's a parking lot to be accessed from Wilson Crescent, the, as well as the garbage facility that's shown on the particular site. The, in looking at the various planning aspects involving this property, we had regard to the provincial policy statement and the provincial growth plan. The provincial growth plan for 2015 will require that the city achieve forty percent of its new residential growth within the existing urban boundaries. This proposal is the type of project that the province expects us to, to actually accomplish as a municipality, and so the municipality will be seeing more of this type of application. The official plan designates the land residential. The density of this project as well satisfies the official plan requirements. The site's well-suited to multifamily development, because it's on a surface where very residential neighbors are, it's on an arterial road, it has access to public transit, and it's in close proximity to a commercial district. The density that they have requested is seventy units per hectare, that's twenty-eight units per acre. This is within the range of density that's contemplated along McCloud Road. The site has to be in access to an arterial road, as it is in McCloud Road. The site is close to wide range of services. The apartment building, it's been designed in terms of its massing and its height to be compatible with the surrounding dwellings in the area, and as well, they have included a significant amount of landscaping along the property. We're suggesting, however, the building be shifted slightly to achieve some greater landscaping along the south property line. The zoning of the property is currently zoned TRM. TRM is a transitional residential multiple zone that the city placed on these lands a number of years ago. The idea was to consolidate properties into redevelopment property, or lands, and that's exactly what has happened here. The applicant has requested an R5B zone, that's a residential zone, and they're seeking a density of a hundred and forty square meters per unit. This results in, as we've said, seventy units per hectare, which is in keeping with the density contemplated by the official plan. The zoning that's in place protects a road widening along McCloud Road that has been identified in the official plan, and the site plan that was shown a couple slides ago does accommodate that. The applicant is also seeking permission to have a covered top porch project into the exterior side yard, that's the side yard along Wilson Crescent. This is the same projection that's already allowed in the front yard along McCloud Road, is want to extend that privilege to the side yard, you'll see that in a minute. The, as well, the landscaping along the south side, or along the Wilson Crescent side, we're recommending that it be three meters. This would assist in creating the front yard consistency along Wilson Crescent. We're suggesting as well that the building be shifted towards McCloud Road to accommodate a three-meter or ten-foot-wide landscape buffer strip along the south property line to make it more compatible to the existing dwelling to the south, and we're recommending that, so we're recommending that landscaping be included. In conclusion, then, we're satisfied that the application does meet the provincial policy requirements, it satisfies the official plan, it's lands that are already zoned, transitional residential multiple, in anticipation of being redeveloped. The proposal fits within the scale and the massing that's allowed by zoning, and we do not believe that it's going to have a impact on the area, therefore, we're recommending that the council support the application, the amendment of zoning bylaw to permit the twelve-unit apartment building. That's the highlights of this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hulich. Members of public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is someone here other than the applicant?
Yes.
If you'd just come forward, please, identify yourself and your address, please.
Worshipful.
Yes, sir.
I'm representing my parents, they're, they're the only house that's to the south of that.
Yes, sir.
And just-
Your name, please.
Sam Panessa, my parents, Joe and Josephine.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we don't mind the building going up, just a few pointers or points that we like done. Like you already, he said, the landscaping where the fence is there, you guys said ten feet from the fence to your parking lot. We would like the fence to be a little higher for my parents, because they want, right now, it's like five feet, we'd like maybe seven feet, that's another point. Third, I don't know where you guys are going to put your garbage bin, or whatever, I'd like to be, like, away from the house, and if we can put some evergreens or something like that along my parents' fence, where you guys are going to put the landscaping. And that's it.
Okay, we'll see if we get your questions answered.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation, your comments. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Okay, no one else, then, we'll ask at this time, or we'll hear from the applicant or representative? And for the record, please, your name and address.
Okay, my name is Donna Brown.
Yes.
My address is 11179 Niagara River Parkway, Niagara Falls.
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome.
Welcome, uh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilors, residents of Niagara Falls, neighbors of Wilson Crescent and McCloud Road. I'm here tonight to ask and present a proposal for zoning bylaw amendment application to the southwest corner of McCloud Road and Wilson Crescent. Again, my name is Donna Brown, and this is my husband, Perry Brown. We are residents of Niagara Falls. I'm a public health nurse, and my husband is in the construction field. The purpose for proposing this building is twofold. One, as a public health nurse, I see a need for quality rental housing in the, in the city of Niagara Falls. And number two, to offset our family's income. Firstly, I would like every, I'd like to thank everyone for considering this project, uh, thank everyone for considering this project, and I'd like to reassure councils and residents of Niagara Falls that I am in agreement with the policies of Niagara Falls and the policies put forward, and commit to maintaining the construction of this building according to the scale and finishes. At this time, I would like to request a minor variance to the rezoning application, and ask that the landscaping requirement to three meters along the parking lot be reduced to 1.8 meters. And that, Mr. -I did not read along, it has, the, the, Wilson Avenue, so would that be, or Wilson Avenue, would that be north, would that be considered north then? We've made some changes to the parking lot, to, in agreement with what was requested, I think, of maintenance, to move the garbage container from its location now to closer, okay, you can show, to right there, at the back of the building. What was required is, we had to do some changes to the configuration of the parking to allow for a garbage truck to be able to come into that, come in to the parking lot, and be able to turn around without having to back out of the parking lot. And to do that, we need, we need to request the minor variance, to ask for 1.8 meters rather than three meters. Now, we're open to considering, if that's not something that council would consider, we're open to, open to considering other, is other solutions to the garbage. That was the only issue that I was aware of. Every, everything else that's been requested has been resolved, I believe the, the building has been moved forward, and Mr. Panessa's parents, they, we moved the, the parking lot, I guess it would be west, more west, more forward.
It'd be more, you're on the, you're on the south side of McCloud Road, so-
Okay.
Okay, so you're moving the parking lot forward.
Parking lot more forward towards the building to accommodate that three-meter request-
Yes.
-for landscaping along there.
And the fencing was a question that Mr. Panessa was asking about as well. Can you tell us what plan, what you'd planned for the screening?
We're, whatever, we're in agreement with whatever the residents would request, as long as that's approved by the city or the building department. So if we can put a seven, seven or eight-foot-high fence, if that's something that would be, you know, approved of by the city, we would agree with that.
Okay, Counselor DeDaddy has a question, Counselor?
Well, just to request, worship, everything looks good, and it looks like everyone's working together, which is great. Just to request that Mr. Panessa and any other concerned residents, just be a part of the site plan process as we usually do, just to make sure everything continues to go smooth. I would make that motion.
Okay, so you're seconding the motion?
No.
Counselor Mayes? Yes, we haven't closed, we'll be able to deal with that in a second. Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. I have a question to our staff. This is a location right across the street from our four-and-a-half-story apartment dwelling that has just been approved. At that time, we have dealt with that since the year 2000, a stoplight. I have not heard whether we're going to get a stoplight or not. That particular street that this development's going on is the street where Ico Nota Danda La Junes, the school is. Buses, cars, it's a very traffic area. I have no problem with your development, but I have a problem with a stoplight, and I still have not heard if we're getting a stoplight. Now, the people across the street with the four-and-a-half story have offered to give us $25,000 toward it, but we haven't heard we're going to get it. That's a very important issue for me.
Counselor Fisher?
If we make big development-
Sure.
I would like to see that addressed.
And Counselor Fisher, we'll ask you, Mr. Grant, a question, there's an EA that's just about to commence as well, about to reach on road, but, Mr. Grant, can you address that, please?
To the chair, I do regret, uh, this is a matter that is true to the region. Uh, we're requesting a day review for the practical building, and it's in there, and it's right now, we're taking a day for McCloud Road, and we're, at the same time, same review for the residential project.
So how can I approve more density and more traffic unless I know whether we're getting this stoplight? I mean, I'd like to do this, I think it's a, it's a fine project, but I have great concern. I'm one of the people that used to travel that road, I'm one of the people that delivered children to that school, I know what it's like there, and it's not a two-way highway, it's a four-lane street, very, very fast. It's a four-lane street, very, very fast, as the police department who catch cars one way after the other there on a regular basis. How do we know we're going to get a stoplight?
Mr. Grant?
Again, through the mayor. It is a red alert. They would have to determine whether a traffic signal is warranted or not, and they'll do that through the process. There is certain warrants. They haven't identified that in their own back in the game. They'll need first traffic signal, but what we've asked them to do, through both the councils, is to review it for a second, so whether they will get back to us.
I would like to see us put very strong force toward them, and I'd like an answer shortly, because I think it's absolutely crucial. I don't want to approve projects and then after the fact have a problem. And I think we realize there's a big problem there also.
Counselor Fisher, if I could just elaborate, if I may, it's a region that they are going to take an EA right along the...
Oh, I'm not going to take...
It'll take probably several months, and it started now, but that's compulsory. But I can tell you that the warrants are there, there'll be a stoplight, and the contributions that I think are required, as you mentioned last time, we had an application across the road, if there are contributions required, there will be demand again, and a stoplight will be installed. So we're looking at other intersections as well, maybe a...
Several months?
Yes, that's part of the process.
And then how many months after that before the stoplight is put in?
Mr. Grant, can you speculate, Mr. regional matter?
Again, it's a regional matter. It would depend on budget. We do that to the region. It would be air called and asked for when they wanted to review. But again, if there's warrants, again, that's going to be certain warrants. They're going to look at all areas that could form MacLeod Road, and determine what traffic control was in that area.
Two years, three years? This is a school, a big school. It goes from kindergarten, daycare, all the way up to grade eight. It's not a small school. How can we make sure the region understands what we're talking about? I'm very adamant about it. I'm very strong about this. It's not, the answers aren't good enough for me.
Well, as I said to you earlier, and Mr. Grant has confirmed, it is a subject for the EA that's being conducted as we speak, so we can take that to the region as well. That's part of the process, Counselor Fisher. That's the best we can offer at this point.
So I would...
That hasn't just started, but it's, this has been going on in terms of the traffic. There'll be much more traffic as well. On MacLeod Road, there's ton of progress, and we know that because there's future development taking place there, and that's why the EA is being done.
I'd like a lot of urgency put there. That's what I would like. Could you do that for me?
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Good. Now, I'd like to ask the Director of Planning with respect to the site plan requirements that we've heard some of the residents explain, Mr. Hillrich. Have we gotten provision for screening on the southern portion of the lot, on the parking lot, property backing onto the adjacent residence on Wilson? The height requirement of that fence and that screen?
Your worship, the, the city zoning bylaw would require, because this property to develop as a apartment building has to go through site plan. Zoning bylaw requires that there would therefore be a fence erected. The bylaw is flexible, it's four to eight feet. Mrs. Brown has indicated she's willing to provide a seven or eight-foot fence. Mr. Panessa said he'd like to have seven-foot fence. I don't see any problem with that. She has, through her architect, presented a plan to our office. I didn't introduce it to council this evening because we just received it. I felt this is the plan that council is familiar with, which does show that she could move the building further to the left, which is north, to accommodate the 10-foot planting strip between the parking lot and Mr. Panessa's parents', so the trees could be accommodated in there. What Mrs. Brown is asking for today is to be allowed to have 1.8 meters, that is five feet of landscaping along the parking lot next to Wilson Crescent. So in this area, she would like to propose five feet in order to move the garbage from the location here at the west side to a location behind the building here, so a garbage truck can come in, take the dumpster back up into a backup spot and leave the site. In order to accommodate this movement for the garbage truck, which is part of the requirements of our traffic and parking people, she needs to move her parking posts into the street. And so I believe that's something that could be accommodated, but it's something our report didn't contemplate, so if council is going to adopt this, it would have to be with that amendment.
Okay. Counselor Deodato?
Just for clarification, the building, there's still a three-meter setback from the Panessa's, yeah, is that right? Your worship?
That's our recommendation. It's not shown on the site plan before council, but as I say, Mrs. Brown has shown that they can accommodate that, and has indicated a willingness to do so.
And perhaps we can incorporate that if there's a motion to move ahead, so counsel might keep that in mind. Okay? Any other questions by members of council? Having seen none, and at this time, is there anything else, Mrs. Brown, you'd like to share with us?
No, that's all. I'd like to thank you again for your support and consideration that you're giving in this matter.
Thank you. And Mr. Panessa, you've already spoken, but is there something else you'd like to say?
Something quick. Those trees in the back there, the old tree, what are you going to do with that?
Well, we have proposed to leave them. That's what the architect, as a, as a kind of priority.
Mrs. Brown, we can't hear you. Could you just suggest, you should be able to hear yourself.
We have proposed to leave the trees, which you can't see on this drawing. There are, I think, five trees along, would that be the, okay, this north-south?
MacLeod is the north.
Okay, so the west side of the property, so we're looking at the bottom of the picture. There are five trees along that property line. I'm not even sure, I was asking them today about those trees, and they said they weren't even sure they were on our property. So if they're not on my property, I can't, or the property that we proposed to build this building, we're not sure that we can do anything. But we have said to Mr. Panessa's parents that we're willing to trim the trees, but if it's an issue of dispute and city is in support of having those trees removed, then I don't have a problem with removing the trees.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay.
Then at this time, members of council, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Counselor Deodato?
Well, first motion, Your worship, is to include Panessa and any other interested families in the site plan.
And then, and then also to...
To approve the report and just to reconfirm that there will be the three-meter setback to the south.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any further discussion?
What about the 1.8 meters? I was looking at requests...
And the 1.8, okay, we'll incorporate that as well. Please, thank you, I appreciate that. That's okay with members of council? Any other questions by members of council? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Clark, could you introduce the next item in the agenda, please?
The public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed retirement home at the addresses of 7901, 71, 7913, and 7933 Thoreau Stone Road. Quote was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, December 28th, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice for the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if a park about will preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. At this time, once again, I would like to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Clark, Mr. Planus, please.
Thank you, Your worship. The, the property is showing in the location map on the screen. It involves three parcels of land on the northeast corner of Thoreau Stone Road and Cardinal Drive. These lots are occupied by single-family houses at the moment. Immediately to the east of this property are these properties, are two apartment buildings occupied by these owners. The co-op to the garage into the north are single-family houses within the North Family Neighborhood. South across Thoreau Stone Road are a number of single-family houses as well. Further to the west is Thoreau West Plaza and a hub of commercial services at the corner of Montrose and Thoreau Stone Road. The backdrop, oops, where are we doing? Is that me? Anyway.
That was you.
Oh. We have, we have a new system. We haven't worked the bugs out yet. Anyway, the, thank you, Dean. The backdrop behind this property, it's 1.9 acres of land. The applicant is proposing a three to four stories. In some locations, the building is three stories in height, and in some, the location closest to Thoreau Stone Road, the building is four stories in height. They're proposing a retirement home with 83 suites. The site is currently zoned for 25 townhouse units and one single-family detached dwelling. The applicant is requesting an R4 zone that would be site-specific to permit this retirement home. He's also seeking site-specific provisions that would relate to the building setback, the building height, and the, and the number of parking spaces. The site development is shown on the plan ahead of you, so that the, on the, on the right-hand side, you can see that the building is located closest to Thoreau Stone Road and to the east property line. The parking lot is, has access to Cardinal Drive and provides parking for 56 cars. The elevations that are shown on the left side of this, this drawing, the top elevation is actually the back of the building, so that the, the left portion of this building, this facade, is actually the northernmost part of this building. The two-story section is actually this elevation in profile. The applicant was trying to step the building down so it'd be in line with the two-story buildings located along Cardinal Drive. The next drawing down in the middle is the Thoreau Stone Road elevation. So driving along Thoreau Stone Road, this is the image you would get. Three stories at the west-ree side, four stories at the southeast corner. So four stories in this location, three stories here, two stories here, three stories here. Again, here's the east elevation. And again, because of the scope of the land, it's three stories in the back, four stories in the front, and this is the Cardinal Drive side. Again, two stories closest to the houses on Cardinal Drive, three stories on the Thoreau Stone Road side. The plans are designated residential in the city's official plan and within the Northwest Community Secondary Plan. The documents anticipate that there would be ancillary uses such as retirement homes located within a residential designation. The uses are ancillary and compatible with, in terms of the type of density, height, radiation, massing, those are the items I was just showing to you. The arrangement as well for setbacks. The proposal meets the guidelines with respect to the fact that it's at the corner of a collector road. Cardinal Drive is a collector road. Thoreau Stone Road is an arterial road, so there's direct access to both the site, down the collector road, to the arterial road, and there are traffic lights at that intersection. The property is also in close proximity to commercial parks and schools. The site is not expected to generate significant amounts of traffic, and the site already, the site has already access to Thoreau Stone Road, as I mentioned. The building is a step back in, from two to three to four stories is the outline, and therefore, in terms of build form, is compatible. The setbacks for the building vary from 20 meters to 40 meters from the adjacent properties. This is significantly greater than what we would have for standard apartments. Typically, we require one-half the building height for apartment buildings, so as I said, it's a significantly greater. The drawing that we saw of the site plan, let's put that for a second. On the Cardinal Drive side, the building is actually closer than six meters at this point, and the planning department is recommending a six-meter setback along the Cardinal Drive side, which would be similar to the setbacks that we have along the, for the single-family houses along Cardinal Drive. The applicant is proposing significant landscaping around the property, and he's proposed 10 to 23 feet, depending on just the location between the parking lot and the back lot lines of the adjacent residential properties. The proposal will assist in meeting the housing target mix that we have for these areas. Our secondary plan requires that we try and achieve 30% multis. We have lost some blocks at the Fathom and Port, but we've got a block of land identified initially for multis at Mount Cardinal Boulevard and Cardinal Drive. Those were later changed to single-family houses because of a floodplain situation there, so we have lost some local family sites over time. The zoning on the site right now is zoned R4. The applicant is proposing that it contains the existing R4, but sets some specific standards to allow the, is the suites for seniors accommodation. They're seeking a increase in height from 10 meters to 16 meters, and while this might sound significant, the 16 meters is on the Thoreau Stone roadside of things. At the back of the property, it would still be 10 meters, which is the existing height permitted on that property. This would also accommodate the peak roof that the applicant wants to install to maintain the residential character. The applicant is seeking a reduction of front yard setback to Thoreau Stone Road, and this is to accommodate a roadwinding that is required to be dedicated along Thoreau Stone Road. The, they're also seeking a reduction of the interior side yard. This is the east side closest to the apartment co-ops on the east. They've done that in order to provide greater setbacks for the single-family dwellings to the west. The city's typical requirement for a retirement home is .6 parking spaces per suite. The applicant is proposing .65 spaces, that's 56 parking spaces for this, and I've already mentioned the setback along Cardinal Drive. Staff is recommending six meters or 20 feet along that west side. The, in conclusion, we're recommending support for this retirement home. It's not comprised with the official plan. It provides for the mix of housing types that the Northwest Secondary Plan contemplated. In fact, it completes the, a mature housing area that is a complete range of housing from single-family, multifamily, to residential retirement homes, so that people are able to, in fact, complete their entire life cycle within the same community. The, we're recommending the setback along Cardinal Drive, as I've mentioned, and we believe that it will provide the, to the housing choices. The recommendation there for us to support the application submitted by the applicant subject to the six-meter setback along Cardinal Drive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hillrich. I think Counselor Deodato, you have a question?
Yeah, through your schedule two, Mr. Hillrich, can you just one more time explain which parts are four, three, and two-story? Please.
The two-story is in this location, at the, I'll call that the north western corner, closest to the detached dwellings that already exist on Cardinal. This area here, this wing, is three-story, and this portion of the wing is four-story. So the southeast corner, closest to Thoreau Stone Road, and the back portion to the housing co-op, to the, the three-story location.
Okay, is that your question? Okay. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak. Anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak. Is there anyone present other than the applicant? Is there anyone present other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Having seen none at this time, then the council will hear from the applicant or his representatives. Please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sean Horrigan, Executive Vice President of Reichmann Seniors Housing Development Corporation of Toronto. Your worship and members of council, uh, thank you very much for listening to me tonight. Uh, Reichmann Seniors Housing is a privately-held company building brand-new seniors accommodation across the country. Uh, we're very excited to come to Niagara Falls. It was about a year ago, my sister, who is a local resident, helped me find this property. Uh, we build comfortable, affordable, full-service, uh, accommodation for seniors. Uh, we're building the newer style that has larger suites, one-bedroom, one-plus-ten and two-bedroom suites with a wide variety of amenity areas. We will be providing somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 to 45 full and part-time jobs as, as we service our seniors. And again, um, we know that Niagara Falls has a large contingent of seniors. We're also building in the St. Cassians area, so we're proud to, uh, come to the peninsula.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horrigan. Now, are there any questions for Mr. Horrigan at all? Okay, and, uh, there's a concern with regard to the, um, the setback on Cardinal Drive. Mr. Horrigan, can your company meet those requirements?
Uh, yes, we can. Uh, your worship, our architect who is with us tonight could explain, but, uh, we, we see no problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions at this time in the public meeting with respect to the proposed running by law amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Counselor Mose? Okay, move the recommendation into your second. Counselor Carrillo? Any further discussion or comments? Having seen none, others in favor, the motions carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public ruling is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw to permit a office, an office at 4067 Drummond Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, December 28, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the, uh, official plan and zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, we're going to ask the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hervich?
Thank you, your worship. The, um, this, uh, property is located on the, um, west side of, uh, Drummond Road, uh, south of Thorac Stone Road. The, um, the property immediately to the north and the two properties to the south are, uh, currently occupied by, uh, dwellings. The lands to the, uh, west is part, are part of a, uh, stable residential neighborhood. Um, to the east, the lands are, uh, all part of the five-pointers commercial node. That is the, uh, um, you know, a, um, a shopping district, uh, which is entirely developed with, uh, commercial uses. Uh, across the street is actually the back of a chem optical. Uh, there are a number of other commercial areas within the area. Um, one property to the north is a commercial plaza, so as I said, it's a, uh, a hub of commercial activity. Uh, this particular property is, um, one in a, um, line of, um, of detached dwellings along the west side of Drummond Road. The applicant is seeking an official plan amendment, um, for the, uh, property, which is about 6,000 square feet in area, and he's, um, seeking to convert the existing dwelling into an office, uh, which has a floor area of about 1,100 square feet. The, uh, site plan, uh, shows the, uh, the property as, uh, the applicant is proposing. That is to, uh, the existing dwelling is shown in red. Um, the, um, existing driveway is on the north side of the house. He's proposing to maintain that and provide access for six cars in the rear of the property, which would, uh, be the requirement for the, uh, office function, and then provide a second driveway on the south side of the house to exit onto Drummond Road. Uh, we'll speak further to that, but our recommendation is to actually consolidate, um, that driveway into one driveway in and out of the property onto Drummond Road and in essence, close the north driveway, widen the driveway to the south, uh, so there's some landscaping, uh, on both sides of the, uh, property. The, uh, uh, lands are currently designated residential in the official plan. Um, the long-term intent is that these lands be developed for multiple unit, um, developments. The, uh, property is contiguous, as I've mentioned, with the five-pointers commercial node. Uh, it is planned, however, by residential properties on three sides. Uh, and we feel, feel until the whole of the block funding onto Drummond Road is consolidated, rounded out as a commercial node, uh, it would be premature to designate this as major commercial. So as an alternative, we're recommending that the official plan be, um, revised or be amended to allow a special, uh, policy provision on top of the current designation. This would allow the office use to, um, to occur while retaining the residential designation, which, uh, if someone shows through the future, consolidate this with the property, be the north and south, develop those for, um, for op, uh, for residential uses, multifamily uses. Um, and that the, uh, limiting the use to an office, uh, will maintain the, uh, character and scale of the, uh, existing, um, property next to it. The, um, dwell, uh, the current dwelling has a floor area of about 1,150 square feet. Uh, it's not expected to have a significant impact on the commercial vacancy rate of the area or the city in general. The, um, residential designation would remain and would be site-specific, as I've mentioned, um, and this would protect the long-term intent that the area actually redeveloped for multifamily units. The zoning of the land is TRM. Um, this is again, that transitional residential multiple zone that the city placed on the lands with the idea that property would eventually be consolidated into, uh, apartment blocks or into, uh, townhouse, um, development. The applicant has requested a general commercial, uh, zone, which would, uh, permit a broad, wide variety of, uh, commercial purposes, uh, that already exist in the area. Uh, but because the subject property is relatively small, I mentioned 6,000 square feet, um, a full range of commercial uses may not be appropriate on that property since the applicant was proposing a office for this site. We're recommending that, uh, we diszone the property as, uh, as an office that use the, uh, neighborhood commercial, uh, zoning to reflect that. This is actually similar to what we do, uh, for properties on the west side of Portage Road, opposite of the hospital. Those lands are designated residential. There's a special policy that allows, uh, commercial uses such as blooming baskets, and, uh, the individual properties are actually zoned NC, so it's, uh, a practice that we already have established in the city. Uh, we also believe that it's necessary, important to maintain as much front yard landscaping as possible, uh, as long as the houses exist to the north and south of this property. So we feel it's important to maintain the existing street character. The, uh, there's sufficient room in the rear yard to move the parking away from the, um, from the fence, just moving back to the site plan. The, uh, area between the house shown in red and the parking areas is, uh, greater than the, what is required by the bylaw. So by reducing the size of the maneuvering aisle in this location, moving these spaces here towards the building, we can achieve a landscape strip next to the fence. Um, and we have received, uh, one item of correspondence from one of the neighbors to the back expressing interest in preserving the, uh, walnut trees and the landscaping, uh, strip along that particular side. So that, um, uh, requirement to provide for, um, a, uh, 1.2 meter, which was, um, as a landscape strip along that side, plus a, uh, a six-foot-high closed porch fence along that parking lot to ensure privacy for the, uh, residential area to the west should be incorporated into the, uh, site plan. As I've mentioned, we're recommending an NC zone, a neighborhood commercial zone with special provisions. This would, uh, uh, limit this to, uh, office uses or provide for, uh, to residential uses, giving the, uh, flexibility for the property to develop in either, uh, direction. Uh, we're recommending again, as I mentioned, the consolidation of the driveway into one, uh, ingress and egress, uh, post of the building and, uh, maintaining the, uh, landscape strip along the, um, along the west side of the property. We're therefore recommending, um, the proposal for an office, uh, subject to being a part of a special policy area with, um, neighborhood commercial to, uh, facilitate the office use. We believe this is, uh, meets the intent of the official plan, um, and until the law, until the lands are consolidated for a full grounding out of that commercial node, uh, that that's, uh, the best fit for our planning program, and we're recommending these, uh, subject to the measures I mentioned, uh, for a landscape strip and fence to protect the, uh, existing residential uses to the west. That's the, uh, that's the, uh, recommendation of the planning department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hervich. And once again, members of public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Uh, failure to sign, the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 17, subsection 24 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment. Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name, any other council members? Honorable mayor, my name is Todd Reed. I live at 4079 Drummond Road.
Was it Green, did you say?
Reed, R-E-I-D.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I live on the south side of the, I meant, uh, mentioned proposal. Um, my concerns that I do have, the first one would be adequate water drainage. They want to, uh, tarmac the 90% of the property there and, and run a driveway down in between the two houses. Now, that's gonna affect absorption rate. Having lived in that house for 15 years, uh, when Charles Newman owned all three of them in a row, um, I know a little bit about where the water settles on all three of those properties. Um, where is it gonna go now? Are they gonna tap the sewer in and drain it out to the city? Um, where's the snow removal gonna go? Where's that gonna be placed? Is it gonna run down the edge of the driveway close to my house so when it melts, it goes into my basement due to hydrostatic pressure? That's just a runoff from the snow. What about regular rain that we do have in that area? Uh, the landscaped area, there's green grass there already on the front side, and is that gonna stay just for green grass? Is something gonna happen to that, or are they gonna pile snow on top of that again? The driveway that they're proposing to do, to open one up and close one down, I lived in that house for 15 years and never had a problem backing out or pulling out of that driveway where it fits now. Um, I don't see a need for it to pull up nice green grass and, and destroy actual green, green space on the property. Um, if they are gonna allow a parking lot in that area, I'd like to see maybe a six-to-nine inch parking curb to deflect water from coming onto my property. I know Charlie Newman had to put one at 4079 when he moved his chiropractic office onto 4079 to restrict the water flow from the end house. With six, uh, parking spots in the back, they're gonna need to light that up somehow at nighttime. I'm worried about light pollution. Is it gonna be a sensor light? Is it gonna be on 24 hours a day? What's gonna happen there? Privacy fence. I'm gonna see those cars going in and out all the time. I, I have a kitchen, a bathroom, and a dining room that faces the side yards there where the new proposed driveways are gonna be. I'd like to see some kind of fence put up if that does, uh, actually go into effect. And I don't know if you can do this or not, but some kind of stipulation on resale of the property, because if they're gonna have a small office in there now, what's to say what they're gonna put in there in the future? You know, it can, it can be something that's gonna have a lot more traffic and cause a lot more aggravations. Um, seven months ago, when the property changed hands to the new purchaser now, um, previously that was sold off, uh, a year and a half earlier to a residential family, and they stayed and, and invested a lot of money in that house to bring it up and make it look nice. Seven months ago, there was half a dozen houses for sale on the east side of Drummond Road and also Portage Road. The new owners could have bought over there if they were looking to actually open up a business. You know, it would make things a lot easier. Um, just one other concern I have, the neighbor on the north side who is out of town right now made a written submission. I don't know if you've received it yet. Um, his name is Gary, Gary Burnett, lives at 4051 Drummond Road. Um, he's in New York right now, but, uh, he's, he would like to be part of these proceedings also. Uh, he has voiced that opinion to me. He has written something, and I don't know if you've received it yet, but, uh, those are my concerns that I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. We'll see if we address your concerns. Thank you. If you have anyone else who'd like to have, uh, make, make comments as well? Mr. Schmenti?
Good evening, your worship and councilors. My name is Judy Schmenti. I live at 6239 Crawford Street, and I own the property on the west side of, um, this area that we're talking about. I did submit a letter, and in my letter, um, I have basically two concerns. Um, I said, um, I have concern in regards to proposed paved area and the impact that it would have on five mature trees surrounding the property and the possible congestion of, of parking along, uh, Crawford Street. I understand that the owner wants to, uh, you know, uh, has an interest in making like a circular driveway, we'll call it a circular driveway, um, and because of the traffic that you have on five corners. And I, and I understand because you can have some difficulty getting out of, on Drummond Road due to the traffic there. Sometimes I think you almost need to have, uh, you know, a speed, um, bump or a speed trap there because the cars just go whizzing by. And I know you've heard of this in the past from us, what are you going to do? But it doesn't get done only because, uh, there, people just do what they want to do on that road. Um, the paving of this driveway and parking lot concern me because, um, even though there's gonna be that three feet between my fence and, um, the parking lot, my concern is both the two mature trees. There's, um, a Norway maple, uh, maple and a walnut tree that are within that area. Um, then there are along, um, the property, now I, I don't have my directions right, but, um, there is a, a, a tree in the front that is an old silver maple tree, and then another tree. Those also will be impacted if you put in this driveway. Now, yes, I know we're talking about surface roots, but how deep will this, will this be? These are mature trees. Will they be lost? And even though people say you're not gonna lose your trees, well, all you have to do is go and look at the complex. When Camiso came in and all those big old trees, yes, they did have their space around them, but eventually those trees have died. And my concern is these trees do provide for our environment. They give us, um, the quality of air that we need. They also give us the beauty, and they are pretty. And yes, I do have to rake and do all things like that, but they're worth it because of the beauty of these old trees. Uh, in regards to the parking lot, I, I wonder, is there adequate parking space to accommodate the staff and the clients that will be coming? And if not, Crawford Street would be, um, access to assist the overflow, uh, within that parking lot. Um, right now, it can be a challenge for me to get out of my driveway because of the cars, um, coming around the corner from Drummond. And my whole concern will be, will Crawford Street then become an overflow for the parking that is needed at this, um, particular office? These are my concerns, and thank you for letting me express them.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone other than the applicant as well who'd like to speak? Anyone other than the applicant who'd like to speak? Okay, if not, then we'll call the applicant forward, please.
Good evening, mayor, uh, councilors. My name is Jim D'Angelo. I live at 7860 Brenna de Cresson. Uh, we purchased the home on, uh, Drummond Road to relocate our office. Uh, it's basically a financial company from Toronto to Niagara Falls. Uh, most of our business will be done in the daytime, and 80% of our business is not done in the office, but out of the office. So the traffic flow in the parking lot, there probably be no more than two or three cars parked there at one time. parked there at one time. And ninety percent of the use of the building will be used in the daytime before five o'clock.
Some other concerns that you recall? Could you address some of those?
The fencing, we're prepared to put a fence around it. And we can grade the property to make sure it doesn't go on the other guy's property next door. Sort of grade it to come out from the front. And we can leave the driveway. Recommendation was to put the driveway on the other side. We thought it'd be easier to get out of the property. But we can leave the driveway exactly where it is. Whatever the staff recommends is best for the property. We're willing to work with that.
Okay. Members of council, do you have any questions of the applicant? Counselor Thompson?
The only thing it didn't hit were the trees.
The trees will be stayed. We have no intention of taking the trees down. Actually, my neighbor was asking me to take one of the trees down on the one side pings over his house. We're willing to trim that tree, but we'd like to keep as many of the trees on the property as we can.
Okay. Counselor DiDati?
Other thing that was mentioned was the lights. Question they'd asked you about.
The lights will be on a sensor. So when a car pulls in, they will go on, and then after five minutes, mostly we'll probably be using the back door as the main entrance of the building. So after a few minutes, it'll go, they'll shut down again. Ninety percent of the business is done in the daytime. Unless you're having a meeting at nighttime, we have a boardroom set up there under the wheel. And unless it's done at nighttime, there'd be no personal.
Excuse me, sir. Yes, did you want to say something? Are you?
My name is Jeff. I come from Toronto. I am a mortgage broker. So my purpose, Jim is my partner, we are both bought this property. We want a mortgage broker office to live for us. The purpose is to improve the business because the large Chinese people come to here and the large Chinese tourists will be visited there for us. That's why we have this idea. The people just come up at night. I think this company, we only operate the business hours from nine o'clock to five o'clock. So we don't operate at night. So I think that's.
The mortgage company is located at Scarborough area right now. Sixty percent of our business now comes from Niagara Falls. And there's a more influx of foreigners coming here. So we'll probably be the first Chinese speaking mortgage company available.
Very good. Okay. Counselor Maves, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Reed mentioned about the paving. There seems to be an awful lot of pavement in there, and he's concerned with drainage. Is there some way you can cut down some of the pavement and have some more grass or landscaping in it, as I say?
We're willing to do whatever. I think the way they designed it was to put the parking along the back of the fence. But we can, like, we're willing to do whatever is recommended.
Mr. Hurlivich, you would? Yes. I was going to ask the counsel if I could. Mr. Hurlivich, you might want to explain the site plan process and what might be involved there with respect to drainage and some other issues.
Well, through your worship to Counselor Maves, the bylaw requires six parking spaces, and each parking space is basically ten feet wide by twenty feet wide. So in order to comply with the zoning, that's, it basically takes up the majority of the rear yard of this particular property in order to meet the bylaw requirements. I've already heard from one of the speakers, she's concerned that there might not be enough parking. So if we were to provide more green space in the back, it would mean a shortfall in the required parking. So my preference would be to meet all of the parking. I'd suggest that perhaps we may want to have the parking lot left as a gravel surface that would allow then percolation of water into the ground, which would, again, provide water for the existing trees. Perhaps the driveways then could be paved so that the gravel's not coming out onto the street, but that, so it allows some penetration of the water. I would suggest that as the solution to address some of the concerns of the area residents.
Counselor Maves?
No, that answers my question. I just, as I say, that probably would solve the problem if you put gravel rather than solid paving. Thank you.
Counselor Carrion?
My question, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of council? Okay, having seen, okay, having seen none, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Pleasure, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I would move that the opportunity be given to Mrs. Chmenti and Mr. Reed to sit in on the site planning to make sure that their concerns with respect to drainage and access fencing and the other issues of them brought up, they're able to have input into that. Move the adoption of the recommendation.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, I'll call the vote. All of them in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Members of council, I have a few comments this evening. I'd like to begin this evening by offering condolences to Mrs. Mary Ann Tiki of our Municipal Works Division on the loss of her father, Mr. John Demarche, as well as Mr. Liberato DiPardo, an employee of the Water Department, whose father Angelo DiPardo recently passed away. Just want to assure the families that the thoughts and prayers of members of council are with you and your families during this time. There have been some important events in our community recently. I'd like to acknowledge for a moment, as you're aware, Provincial Minister of Tourism, Mr. Peter Fonseca, spent some time in our city this past week, and we are pleased to join him with our colleagues and friends in tourism in Niagara Falls. We met with the minister myself and several members of council, had the opportunity to sit with and to speak to Mr. Fonseca and address the priorities and challenges that we see facing our city in tourism. We are pleased to have the opportunity to have discussions with our new Provincial Tourism Minister. I've also been pleased to participate with several area schools in event supporting Literacy Week in our school boards recently. I met with students and shared stories, and we'll be spending more time with our students in the coming week. I'd like to congratulate the teachers, the board staff, and the students on their efforts to promote Literacy Week in our city. And as part of the thirteenth Niagara Ice Wine Festival, I was pleased to attend the Fallsview Casino Resorts Fire and Ice Wine Gala. It was a pleasure to support our city's participation in this prestigious event. Once again this year, I'd like to thank the organizers, the chefs, and local volunteers for their contribution. I also had the pleasure to participate along with the Regional Chair and fellow area mayors yesterday at the Niagara Ice Dogs game. We dropped a ceremonial puck at the start of the game between the Niagara Ice Dogs and the Sanya Sting that was broadcast Canada-wide. And you'll be pleased to note that the Niagara Ice Dogs secured a three-one victory over the Sanya Sting. There's some upcoming events I'd like to bring to the attention of residents and members of council. Cavendish Manor is holding a surf and turf fundraising dinner on Saturday, February second. Tickets are twenty-five dollars, and you'll be purchased at Cavendish Manor. And the Fourth Annual Mayor and Council's Chili Cookoff is set to take place on Tuesday, February fifth, in conjunction with Tuesday. It will be held at Optimus Hall, and local guest judges will highlight this year's events. We look forward to expert judging by Mr. Mike Ryan from one oh five point one, The River, Dave Martino and Jen Pellegrini from the Niagara Falls Review, Dan McLean from TV Kojiko, and Dave Boss from Niagara this week. They'll be tasting the offerings of participating restaurants, including the Cag in Niagara Falls, the Fallsview Casino, Edgewater Tap and Grill, the Red Hot Chili Pepper, and Ship and Charlie's. Tickets are ten dollars, and they're available through the mayor's office or at Project Share. And that concludes our comments for this evening. Under comments and communications of the city clerk, we have a request to declare the week, February seventh to fourteenth, as CHD Awareness Week to be proclaimed as the Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week in the City of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor DiDati. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Are there any additional items for consideration by council this evening?
No.
Okay. Again, I'll ask for ratification of Community Services Committee actions by Counselor Carrion.
Thank you, Your Worship. Following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of the January fourteenth, two thousand and eight meeting be approved. And report number F two thousand and eight oh six, audited financial statements from the Niagara Falls Transit Commission, we receive and file. That Counselor Bart Maves act as a liaison between staff and out-of-town bus operators to promote transit services. MW two thousand and eight dash three, two thousand and eight, new sidewalk program. The report we received and filed, that the sidewalk on Bridgewater from Willoughby Manor to Covington Square be plowed, that the sidewalk on Carlton Street between Lundys Lane and Culpeper Street, and Culpeper Crescent to Ash Street be plowed. MW two thousand and eight oh five, winter maintenance update, January two thousand and eight, the council approved the updated winter maintenance policy plan, January two thousand and eight.
Moved by Counselor Carrion, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Members of council, are there any items that you wish to be considered separately? Yes, Counselor Wing?
Yes, MW two thousand and eight dash zero one, funding agreement with region of Niagara Combined Sewer Overflow Management Action Plan.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking for that. Yes.
Two thousand and eight oh one.
Yes, thank you. We'll lift that. Okay. Yes, Counselor Carrion?
I just have a question, Your Worship, on one of the items around four, if you want to ask my question.
I'll ask your question if you can.
Two thousand and eight dash four, the leasehold between historic Niagara and the City of Niagara Falls on the Alvin Block.
Yes.
My question was, is there any leasehold improvements that we have to do?
Okay.
Or are we moving into building as is?
Okay, we'll ask, who can answer that question?
Yes, sir, Your Worship, there are some minimal leasehold improvements to do, some carpeting that needs to be finished off. It was, it had a previous tenant in there that didn't quite finish off all the work, so it's very minor in the way of leasehold improvements that need to be carried out.
Okay. All right, so we'll deal with the items on the consent agenda. We'll lift the one item, and we'll deal with that. Yes, moved by Counselor DiDati, seconded by Counselor Maves. Okay, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Now we'll deal with the funding agreement with the region between Niagara Combined Sewer Overflow Management Action Plan. Counselor Wing?
Yes, thank you. Our report lists five projects which have been approved for funding in two thousand and eight, but the region's report actually lists an additional project, six projects. The one that's listed as being approved by the region for four hundred and ten thousand dollars is Drummond Road from Murray to Lundys Lane sewer separation. And for some reason, it's in the regional list but didn't make our list, and I'd like to know why. If we're eligible for four hundred and ten thousand dollars from the region to get this necessary work done, why aren't we availing ourselves of it?
You're referring to the chart on page six of the report, is that correct? Table two?
There's a listing on the front page of our report, and if you go a few pages, and I guess that would be page six.
Table two? Page six?
Table one I'm looking at.
Okay.
It begins on the second page of the regional report and runs into the third page. It's table one, and it's listed as item sixteen in table one of the regional report, and we've been approved for.
Four hundred and ten thousand, is that correct?
Yes.
Great.
So I'd like to know why that didn't make it into the projects listed on our report.
Mr. Holman, can you answer that question, please?
Mayor, that's an oversight in the report. It should be on the two thousand and eight program.
We were hoping that that would be included. I mean, they've already started work on moving the poles back, as you may know, and that road will be rebuilt. And so, Mr. Holman, do you have an idea? That was an exclusion, an accidental exclusion, and do you have an idea when that work might begin?
This project was, I believe it's described as being Murray to Lundys Lane. We've completed the engineering, and the hydrofalls were in the process of being relocated, and there's some additional property that may be required, daylighting triangles and so on. This section here will be completed this spring.
Okay, very good. Counselor, is there anything?
Just to clarify then, the four hundred and ten thousand is included, it just got left off.
That's right.
Okay, perfect.
I recall from the region. Counselor Wing moves that report, seconded by Counselor Carrion. Any further discussion or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws listed for council's consideration this evening?
No, Your Worship.
Okay, and I can have a motion to reduce the bylaws while you give it a first reading. Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Once again, you've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws two thousand and eight dash oh nine to two thousand and eight dash eighteen read a first time.
Okay, can I have a motion to reduce the bylaws second? Motion? Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Once again, council heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Bylaws two thousand and eight dash oh nine to two thousand and eight dash eighteen, read a second and third time, and pass.
Thank you. The new business, Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, Your Worship. Some time ago that we were contacted by the Ice Dogs to see if we were willing to come up with some money for marketing of the Ice Dogs, and I think, I'll remember, Counselor DiDati and I suggested that maybe in place of that, we might see if the council would buy some tickets to some games and offer them maybe to some underprivileged children in our municipality. And I was just wondering if we had done anything like that, or if we could do it. If we haven't done anything.
We have not yet, and we're waiting on a motion from members of council, so.
Your Worship, along with the idea that we had a while back to do that, I would move that we would purchase a hundred tickets at the price of ten dollars and include it in our budget and somehow find a way to distribute it to some underprivileged and maybe children in our area.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Carrion, or, sorry, Mr. Clerk?
Through Your Worship, we did follow up on that, and we brought it, it was attached to your first budget meeting, the Carpet Services Agenda. And in that, I had received a note from the carpet sales guy at the Ice Dogs, and he was willing to offer us the tickets for as low as twelve bucks, not ten. So twelve, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, do you want to specify the amount?
One hundred tickets.
One hundred tickets? Okay, that's fine. Counselor Thompson, can you second that motion?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, and one way of distributing them, I had some Buffalo Sabres tickets given to me a little while ago when I called Mr. John Braithwaite with the Big Brothers, and he was delighted, and I think that'd be a great way to make sure they go to the people who are in need.
And also, we have the Boys and Girls Club, we want to keep that in mind as well. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further comments? Yes, Counselor DiDati?
John said he enjoyed the game. Thank you.
I went with him.
Okay, we'll call the vote. All of them in favor? Motion's carried. Any other new business? Counselor Thompson?
I have been expressing in caution and concern about the change in the freeze on assessment over the past many budget discussions, and of course, that is coming up in the next year. And in spite of the fact that they're suggesting there should be escalations of fifty, sixty, and a hundred percent in assessments that have been deferred over the last three years, I've heard that the premier has said, well, this will be phased in over a period of time to lessen the impact. I have been watching that and monitoring that closely, and today, I, and thanks to Mr. Burden, who sent me a copy of Bill twenty-eight, which is a private members bill from Member Hudak of the region here with respect to the Assessment Act, which is very specific and that goes on to make a five percent cap, also a reduction of ten thousand dollars on seniors' assessments, and also several other recommendations to ease the pain with respect to what could be a major impact on assessment of properties and affect taxes in municipalities. And I'm wondering, rather than being caught off guard and maybe going in the right direction, we could refer this Bill twenty-eight to have a report back to council to make sure if this is something worth doing, that we endorse it, then certainly lessen the impact on municipalities and seniors and individuals as much as possible. I just received this tonight in my package after talking with Mr. Burden previously, so I would give that to the clerk and ask to make a motion that we refer that to staff and do whatever we can to support it, if it has merit, and I believe it does, to see if we can have some impact in what is going to be, I think, a huge shock to people with their assessment coming off in the next year.
Counselor, do you wish to make that a form of resolution?
Yes.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher, that resolution be sent supporting that bill? Any further?
I don't know, for a report back.
And also supporting the bill?
If, well, a report back, so we can do that.
All right, good. Okay, that's fine. Report back in staff. Any further discussion on that? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Counselor DiDati?
Two things, Your Worship. I just wondered where we were at.
I know we had made a motion to invite Frank Dansovic, this council, I just wondered where we were at with that, and?
Let's try to deal with that first. I'm not sure where Mr. Dansovic is these days, what part of the world he's in, but Mr. Clerk, would you be aware of that?
Australia?
Australia? I thought it may be.
Mr. Dansovic has been recognized at council before. It was actually before this current council, before you came on. In fact, I think we forwarded you some information on that. So I think what we're looking at is maybe trying to find some other forum or venue to recognize him when he indeed is in town next.
Look, we could, just because you do have a motion after he comes to the council when he cracks the one, which he hadn't done before.
Do you know him at all?
No, I don't know him.